See.
Oh, look, there it is. It's being recorded. I didn't even do that, except say that I was.
I did it for you, Heather. Sorry.
No, that's perfect. Okay, awesome. Okay, yes, we can get a roll call of Planning Commission members present, please.
Erin Palin, I'm here.
Bryce Erlich here.
Abby Dolman's here.
Free Boyle here.
Is that all we've got? Okay. How about county commissioners?
Marcella here.
Mudge here.
Glenn here.
Okay, any changes or additions to the agenda?
Heather, I would just request to be able to do a staff update of upcoming projects after Christie's update.
Sure, that sounds great. Any others? Okay, we have minutes to, minutes were sent out today, I think by Paul. I unfortunately did not have a chance to look at them yet. I don't know if anybody else has had a chance to go over the minutes.
Sent them on Friday.
Oh, did you?
Yeah. It's all right. Heather, I went over the minutes. I didn't see any issues.
Okay. Did anybody else have a chance to look at them? If, if not, we can table them to the next, but.
I didn't see anything glaring.
We can do a motion to approve, or we can do a motion to table them.
If there isn't three of you that, that attended the meeting and reviewed the minutes, then we'll have to table them.
Right. Well, and I think I'd probably want to be able to do them all individually, probably anyway, with all the dates. So maybe we'll, if that makes sense, we'll table them and then have approval of them by date. Because it'll, because it will be that way. I think there will only be, I think some of the ones in the beginning will likely be key for, I'd have to pull them up here, but for Howard and Steve and I to be voting on.
I'm fine with that, Heather. That's not a problem.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and table those meeting, those minutes, and we'll just separate them out into minutes. I can work on that for the next one. Or for, sorry, separate them by date. Christie, do you want to give us the housing manager update, please?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, everybody. It's good to see you today. Got too many tabs pulled up. Hold on just a second. Gotta get over there. So the last Housing Coalition meeting was held on 9/16. They are currently recruiting for board members. They've received nine applicants, which is great. That's more than they need to fill their board. During the next meeting, which is scheduled for 10:21 from 1 to 3 p.m., they will be appointing their board members. We also did a social media post. Thank you, everybody, for getting me your pictures. I'm not friends with everybody on Facebook. I don't know if everybody has Facebook, but I'm going to go ahead and put in the chat the link to that post. If you haven't got a chance to check it out, please do. And if you have Facebook and Instagram, please follow Lake County Build a Generation so you can see our posts about housing. Sorry. The Climax Parcel Committee has not, that's a subcommittee of the Housing Coalition. They haven't heard anything from Climax about the donation of the nine acres of land for quite a while, so they've decided to, in the meantime, focus on a couple of other things. The Urban Renewal Authority, the LORA, entered into an incremental tax agreement with the rail yards and got .6 acres dedicated to affordable housing. So they're going to be working on an RFP to find a developer for that parcel. And also, there's an opportunity from the Department of Housing and DOLA to get some community development block grant funds to potentially purchase a building and use it for transitionary housing or community housing. So they're going to kind of be looking into that to see if that might be a good fit. Deed restriction, oh, and that group is going to meet again on 10/12. And then the deed restriction subcommittee is also going to meet on 10/12. I know I had said that they would probably be done with the deed restriction recommendation by the end of October, but I think I was a little ambitious on that. I'm not sure it's going to be ready. On the policy advisory team, they're going to meet again on 10/7 from 4 to 6 p.m. That's going to be their first in-person meeting since the coronavirus has happened. We're going to be meeting outside with social distancing, and they're going to be learning about two policies that they can bring to you and start advocating for in January. So that's pretty exciting. As far, I think I've talked to you a couple of times about Financial Literacy Program that is coming down the pipeline in conjunction with the Chapey Housing Trust. They recently applied for a grant to help get that off the ground, and they got feedback from Full Circle and Build a Generation. So that is pretty exciting. And then the last thing is the Housing Authority has been recruiting for board members. There's one existing board member that's been on there for 20 years. His name's Adam Giffen, and he's going to stay. And then we have three new board members who have applied. They need, that's a board of five, so we'll still need one other person. But they, the, we found out that the mayor has authority to appoint those board members with city council's feedback. So at the next board meeting, which is on 10/6, they will be getting, they will be presented in front of city council and potentially voted in. So that's really exciting. That's the first step to get the Housing Authority stood up. That's kind of where deed restriction will be managed, hopefully, down the line, and lots of other really great things. So that is my monthly update. Does anybody have any questions about what's going on with housing?
Sounds awesome. Thank you, Christie.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Take care.
Okay, so we have, oh yeah, staff update from Anne. Go ahead.
Thank you, Heather. Just wanted to, and I think it'll be good to know what's on, coming forth for the Planning Commission as we look at the code amendment that we're going to be talking about tonight. So we have several different applications that are going to be coming in. We have a conditional use permit that will, the county will be the applicant for the airport gravel pit, potentially another site as well, but definitely the airport gravel pit will be coming in for a conditional use permit, and that will be county-directed and county staff-developed. And then we have a vacation, a right-of-way vacation that has been applied for there. It was, the application was incomplete and still needed some more information, but we do have a right-of-way vacation application pending for Turquoise Lake Estates. And then we also, just recently, we're going to have a pre-app meeting tomorrow for a site plan review for commercial development on, on Poplar at the location right there on Mountain View Drive and Poplar, right on the corner where the Mexican Food Wagon has been. That structure wants to renovate and become a restaurant. And so per code, they will need to go through a site plan review. And so we're just starting to have the pre-app meeting on that. But those, I believe, will be scheduling towards the end of the year or first of the year, once we have complete applications and we're ready to put those for scheduled hearings. So just an update on, on what's coming possibly at the end of the year, coupled with the code work and comp plan and strategic planning that we've been talking about, just so can keep on everybody's radar what's, what's happening.
Yeah, super helpful. Thank you. All right, so we have the Backcountry Zone District, and I know that Anne sent over a staff report kind of on the, on the Backcountry Code Amendment, and I think everybody hopefully had a chance to review that. But if you want to go over it briefly with us, if there's anything you wanted to point out, Anne, or, or give us as initial discussion points?
Sure. I would want to mention that we have Paul's expertise in crafting this zone amendment code language. So I will certainly also open it up to anything that Paul would like to point out, but I think that it largely addressed all of, you know, like I mentioned in the staff report, over a decade of collaboration and work, hard work, on trying to put together this zone district. And so I do think that we do, towards the end of the document, I did point out some discussion starters that aren't maybe covered within the code language. Paul may have some others. Specifically, I made a list, and if you want to, do you mind going to the, almost the last page of the document for screen share? There we go. Just right there. Yep, that's it. So the things, oh, right back to, it was the one with the, like, the timeframe on it. There we go. Perfect. So the things that I pulled out, and like I said, I'd love for Paul to also bring forth the things that he thinks we need to discuss as well. Definition of the Backcountry build. Certainly, that might be something that Paul's already worked on and has confidence of just describing what a Backcountry build is and defining it for the code. And then I think, I think one of the outstanding things that I heard in the discussion that we had when we were talking about Backcountry in our last discussion about it was kind of not being completely settled on the minimum and maximum size idea. And I think it also opens up a discussion should a standard, you know, single-family home be, require a conditional use permit in the Backcountry Zone District. I think that there's some room for discussion there. And then, you know, we had discussed at one point this being an overlay, but now I think we're replacing this with a zone district. And so the density, dimensional and density standards, that'll be an area to discuss. And then also minor subdivision requirements. And when we have now a district that is not dependent on a well, perhaps, or standard septic system, and we've allowed some we, some leeway in there for cisterns and, and maybe vault privies as far as sanitation needs, talking about the appropriateness of minor subdivision in this area, and then certainly anything else that anyone has some thoughts about, as well as I think it'd be really good to talk about the timeline. And, you know, what we would be potentially looking at. I went ahead and kind of threw out some hypothetical dates, just to kind of get an idea. But again, is this, you know, is, is this realistic? And I'd also like to enlist the help of Bryce to see if maybe he can help us in our identifying stakeholders for notification. Because we will need to send out notices, obviously, to everyone affected in these areas. And so we had pulled all of that information, but now it's dated. And so I thought that maybe Bryce might be able to help us do that a little easy, or easier than we had before. So thank you, Bryce, for that. So those are just the talking points that staff has pulled out, certainly opened it up if Paul has anything else. And, but I thought maybe those were some areas to maybe start our discussion.
Paul, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Oh, I don't.
Okay, um, I guess just like kind of starting here at the beginning, was there any, any questions? I mean, I know that a lot of you weren't necessarily involved in all these initial preliminary discussions, so I feel like it's probably a lot to take in on this whole new zone district. So just wondering if in any of this there were questions or conversation points that you all wanted to talk about, or what that could look like?
Paul, on the first page under A, I'm not sure if it's a spelling error. Realignments may be in certain cases by allowed, or should that word be be allowed?
That's probably it needs to be allowed. Or may in cases be allowed if public works, yeah. Heather, I wanted to also ask you about this purpose and intent. You reminded me when we were talking about this a little while ago that one of the purposes and intents of the Backcountry Zone District was to keep it back country. I don't know that this purpose and intent here actually does that.
Right, I agree. I mean, I think, well, I mean, I think it does to an extent, but I think a statement or, you know, I think something could be added to reinforce that that's the idea. And I think that would be on this improvements to existing roads and driveways. I think that was part of, you know, why this winter plowing, for instance, was here before. I think winter plowing got a lot more like, how are we going to manage that? But what we didn't want is for you know, somebody to come in with the right amount of money and, and pressure the county and road and bridge to allow them to pave a two-lane road up to their mining claim, for instance. And so I think that, I guess what I, what I would like to see as far as some of this construction and improvements to existing roadways is a little bit more of a might be allowed than it will be. Mostly because I think, and I don't know, the commissioners can weigh in on this also, but it just seems to me like if you get five people that get together that own five mining claims together up there, and they all want to put pressure on the building, or I'm sorry, on road and bridge to extend a road up, I don't want to be putting them in the, in the seat of, oh, well, now you guys have allowed this development to happen in the Backcountry district. Now we have this pressure to provide roads. And that wasn't our intent. Our intent was to keep it, you know, like, rough. You may have four-wheel-drive and summer-access-only kind of access. So I, I don't know how we mitigate that, I guess.
Heather, this is Commissioner Mudge. I also was really curious and actually concerned about that portion reading over it, and to back up from the road access issue further, I just, I'm not sure. I can't quite remember. Back to the intent of this, you know, the intent is to keep, keep things less developed in those areas, but can, can you and staff maybe speak to some challenging either applications or proposals that we've seen where this sets an example? And back to the, the road access issue as well as the wastewater treatment, I, I learned over the last week and a half more about the Forest Service Roadless Rule from 2012. And I, in trying to read and learn more about that and trying to understand how much of this Backcountry area actually overlaps with public lands, where those priorities and kind of regulations to follow are already in place, I wonder if we are, you know, trying to recreate something that's already out there? And as a side note to staff, I think, you know, in talking to the district ranger last week, and, and I, this happened to actually come up from a curiosity and a complaint from a constituent that we were addressing together on, you know, a different, a whole nother use, not, not talking to them about the proposed Backcountry overlay, but quite relevant here. So I guess I wonder how familiar we are with the Roadless Rule and, you know, I think we need to become a little more familiar, and/or my intent, at the very least, at a minimal effort, would be to kind of link those application processes with land management partners such as the Forest Service to people with any in holdings in public lands, because that, those determinations will be made by the federal government and the Forest Service, not us.
Wow, Sarah, that was a lot.
Sorry.
But, but keep in mind, this is not overlay. This is going to be its own zone district.
Right, and the burden of demonstrating legal access to be able to pull a building permit for Backcountry build is on the property owner to be able to produce that, the, the access, not us imposing or, or guiding access.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I just worry about having public works in there, because if we, you know, you know, we might want to call these trails, not roadways. You know, we, we don't want them to be that perhaps scarring on the land or obvious for encouraging user issues. I, I don't know. And then why, can, please remind me why we moved to zoning rather than an overlay? And I will just say, I, yeah, I, I need a total refresher, as I think a lot of the new planning commissioners also would, because I don't have a great deal of comfort with, I guess, zoning, a zoning, a new zoning district rather than
It's a legal issue, Sarah.
Okay.
And, and I tried myself to recall what the legal issue is and spent the last 45 minutes reading statute. You've done that, right? Read statute.
Oh, yeah.
Citing stuff, isn't it? But I can't, and this is something that Erin Smith wrote to me while we were in a, in a hearing, and this is like a couple of years ago, I think, that we can't do it as an overlay. It has to be its own zone district. So I'm going to have to ask Erin to refresh our memories, because I can't remember why.
Right, we were hesitant to make it its own zone district properly. So I think we understand, you know, your thoughts, Sarah, because I think we thought that an overlay would be less invasive and, and easier to implement. But yeah, there was definitely legal standing of why we had to move into. And I can't either. I can't articulate it now, because we took such a break from Backcountry, but we worked extensively on overlay versus zone districts.
So the issue that I remember it being had to do with the underlying, when you do an overlay, the overlay is supposed to be more restrictive than the underlying zone district, and this would do both. It would be more restrictive and less restrictive. And she said you can't do that, because it's the, the underlying, underlying lone zone district has to be the basis, and then the top is more restrictive. The overlay is more restrictive. So that's my understanding as to why she said we can't do an overlay. To give some background as to what we're trying to do here is, is exactly that. We're trying to say, okay, we recognize that these areas may be suitable for camping on for certain amounts of time, or may be suitable for lesser requirements, stringent requirements for cabins or yurts, or whatever that looks like. I think that the idea was that this would have less restrictions than that of your typical, you know, zone district within, in the, in the boundaries of the county that are easily accessible. We, but at the same time, recognizing that because these are difficult to get to and are more of your remote Backcountry-type properties, we want to keep it that way. So the idea is not to improve them and encourage high-density growth in those areas. It's really just allowing those people to be able to use those properties that they can't currently really use them for. And the, the legal access part has always been an issue, because a lot of these two-track roads are not recognized as any kind of legal and legitimate access. And so I don't know, I guess that's a question as to how the building department deals with that. Because there can be a road that's been used and is currently accessing a house on it that somebody else has access off of, but we can't find where that's a legal easement somewhere. So I don't know how that's determined, how legal access is determined for some of these people. But I agree that we don't necessarily want to bring public works into it, saying that they're going to be overseeing these access roads or trails when they're not county roads at this point.
I, I agree with you, Heather. I think that that section concerning references to public works should probably be removed.
This is Commissioner Glenn. A lot of these roads have been used for so many years. There's a claim for use by right. So that's something else you have to look into. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. And I think a lot of people who buy these mining claims are reliant on that, that they, they feel like it's established use. I guess my question to the county is if you are required to get a legal access, or have the, have the homeowner present you with legal access, how is that determined, I guess? Like, what's required of them?
We usually, when it comes down to a building permit, we will actually ask the applicant, did you get access across these other mining claims? And oftentimes, they go, huh?
The, the, what's written here, though, is a bona fide affidavit of prescriptive use. And, and I don't, I don't know exactly what a bona fide affidavit of prescriptive use is.
Well, Bryce has just given us a statute. 20 consecutive years, yeah, so. And I would say probably the case with many of our roads out there, that they've been, so Bryce, tell us, is this statute telling us that it's, that if it's 20 years at least, then it's automatic?
Yeah, it's kind of, from my understanding, it follows standard adverse possession rules. The biggest case law that supports this is the Box Duval case down south in Lake County. And so that's where this case law was kind of set in stone, that if you can prove that it's been a public highway, not necessarily county road, doesn't have to be designated or anything, it's just that adverse use. So, and there's some really interesting case law coming out of the Gunnison area, Marble. You know, what is adverse use? What is permitted use? That 20-year prescriptive period, though, can be any 20 years. So it could have been from 1960- So it could have been from nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty. If you can prove that, then you have the proof you have that it, the access is there.
A legal finding of that are, is it, so is it everyone's understanding or is there an understanding that that can be determined by the county or does that need to be a legal finding?
What I understand is that it's, it's kind of a, if you can prove that the road has been there for twenty-plus years, it is a public highway. The way to get rid of that is that the county commissioners would have to explicitly remove the public highway status from that. So it's essentially like, we need to see where it's, and then once we know what it is and what the road is and it's been put in for over twenty years, then the county commissioners can rescind it almost.
I might want to spend a little time with that section of statutes.
I, I kind of prepared this a while ago. It's just, it's some case law that goes with these statutes. So.
Well, I also, I mean, I guess I also wonder, I guess I, I still feel like it comes down to if I, if I own this mining claim up at the top of Long Dairy and I come in and I'm like, well, I have it off this road and I believe I have prescriptive, I have a prescriptive easement. I'm not going to have a, like, court case finding for that and I'm not going to have a legal easement drafted up and recorded for that. So what is it? I mean, it seems like it puts Anne and Paul or whoever's in the building department in a position of having to determine if they think I'm right about my access. Or do we, you know, change it to where, and I guess my other question to that is, if, if a homeowner in, in this could have its own statute, but if, if a homeowner goes through all the efforts of building and not researching whether they think they have prescriptive easement or legal easement, and then they get into a dispute with that homeowner on that easement at some point, does the county care so much, I guess? I guess I'm just wondering, do we, do we really have to investigate legal access when it comes to these kinds of claims? Or do we just have them sign? You know, or can the, the homeowner say, I believe I have legal access and that's enough for us? Or what is it, what liability is it putting on the county to say that this homeowner provided you with legal access, I guess?
You know, I'm a little, actually, my, my major concern is usually sending a building inspector to a property and I want to make sure that he's not trespassing in order to get to that property. And I've had that conversation with Erin before and, and we didn't take that conversation any farther. But, you know, on the section C here under access, there are three cases in which we might be able to provide and, and either agree that there is access or not agree that, or agree that there isn't access. You know, I, this may be a topic that we're going to have to work out with Erin.
Right. Well, that's why we're having this talk again.
I also want to point out that in the, right in the middle of the purpose intent, there is a statement that a primary intent of the backcountry zone district is to limit improvements to backcountry areas defined to provide a more primitive use of the property on a limited basis.
Yes. Yeah, that middle paragraph, I think, does a pretty good job.
Well, we might want to expand on that just a little bit. So I think Bryce is probably going to pull you into a little of this access conversation because we've been wrestling it up and down for years. So Anne, you, and Bryce.
I mean, I, I totally agree. I, I just went down a rabbit hole trying to find out how to establish access, you know, or what would be, what the hoops I would need to jump through to guarantee access to my mining claim. So that's where I came up with all this research. Yeah, it's interesting. You know, the Boxville case is pretty, pretty clear and provides a lot of good case law, but I'd be happy to pass along the information I have as well. I'm not, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't make any of the final determination of this, my interpretation of it.
All right. Well, I think that, thanks. We need to work on this.
I don't know if it's helpful, but I know Eagle County struggled with it with Berlamon Estates this last year. I'm not terribly familiar with it, but maybe that would just be another example that's pretty close to here.
Who, who estates?
It's called the Berlamon Estates.
Berlamon.
So it was private land that was bordered by Forest Service land. Turned out to be fairly contentious.
Didn't they just approve that too? Or some sort of access they just approved, like recently or from last week?
It might be nice to have a, an executive session with Erin and, and B O C C and or planning commission or members with legal to talk through some of this stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not so sure, Sarah, that it needs an executive session. I mean, there, I don't think there's any secrets here for this. I'll, I'll, I'll get ahold of Erin and I'll ask her how, how she might like to handle that.
Hi, this is Commissioner Glenn. I'm in agreement with Paul. There's no reason to have an executive session. This is something that involves the entire public. This is public information and it should be handled in a public forum. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't mind the idea of still having Erin, you know, like if Erin's willing to chime in on our next meeting and kind of, I think, obviously for sake of time and cost allocation, if we just have a very precise list of things that we're going to talk with Erin about on the, while she's on the line, and then we can move into the rest of our discussion, I think that should work.
Right.
So it looks like, it looks like we're eliminating this section on winter plowing. I'm wondering if we shouldn't also eliminate that section E on grades exceeding standards. Because some of these places you may only be able to get to it with a snowmobile or with something
better. And I think that's why I like that this says that roads with excessive grades may still be allowed, subject to review. Because otherwise they have to follow regular driveway grade if we don't have this in there, right?
Yes, I think you are right. But this, this also encourages, seems to encourage roads and driveways. When in all actuality, they might be building something that doesn't get access by a road or a driveway.
Right.
Well, okay.
But we have it as maybe and quite honestly, I think these kind of properties, you know, less is, less is more for them as well. Back up here under the existing roads and driveways, I know there are a couple of questions we have to get answered with Erin, but I think there are some other discussion points in here as far as do we, well, or maybe we have to just talk about all of it with Erin, I don't know. But I guess I'm wondering, do we want to eliminate or talk about rewording the section about improvements to current roads to be determined by public works? How do we want to look at rewording and handling that section? Or do we feel like all of, all of roads, roadways and access should be discussed with Erin?
I'm, I'm half inclined to think that maybe that section about improvements to existing roads reviewed by public works, we should just take out. I mean, they're, they're going to do it anyway if it's going to be a driveway.
Is there a way to just go back to that intent and try to mitigate any improvements?
Up in this section up here?
Yeah, I don't, I was just trying to think through like what that wording could be, but it's, it almost, and correct me if, and I'm sorry, I wasn't a part of a lot of these discussions. Almost seems like it's trying to maintain as much of a as-is condition. And, you know, and if your, your property allows for a dwelling, you know, you've got to kind of work with what you have.
I think that's correct. And I think that is the, absolutely the idea. It's that, you know, if somebody, if a few driveways get added here and there, that's understandable, but the idea is not to be putting in roadways and in excessively build up, but that a lot of these properties are privately owned and on the tax rolls and we want to allow them to build on them without littering the backcountry with, you know, giant houses and roadways. So I think the idea is to allow building to happen back there, but on that very minimal, you know, there's so many people who just want to have this off-the-grid cabin and it's really hard to allow that right now. So that is the, absolutely the intent is, you know, as little as possible, deal with what you got on the mining claim you pick. Or the piece of property you pick out and, and we'll work with you to keep that minimal improvement.
One of the reasons that a driveway standard exists is for emergency in an egress. And that's something I think that a backcountry user probably needs to understand that that's going to be a little bit dicier than usual. So I might suggest that perhaps Roden Bridge may want to have a backcountry driveway standard.
Well, I mean, we do have in here, I think, you know, it's this zone district, and quite honestly, this is why this has never gone anywhere, is because it's so easy to get so in the weeds about how much stuff you want to add to this thing. But, you know, we have it in here that property owners in backcountry zone district must recognize that access use, access, oh, sorry, I lost my train. Must recognize that access to properties may be restricted and emergency vehicle access may not be feasible. Public services and facilities will typically not be provided and persons interested in owning land within ready access to such services and facilities are advised to seek out the more developed urban areas of the county. I feel like that kind of does that, you know, and, and they know upfront that chances of homeowners insurance, for instance, aren't awesome. We did talk about it one time and maybe it's in here somewhere requiring annual membership to the search and rescue, whatever that is, that card. I forget what it's called and it's drawing a blank, but anyway, we talked about that so that if, you know, some kind of emergency happens, they've at least paid into the search and rescue program, but at the same time, recognizing that that's what they're choosing to do is build this off the grid. Because if we start putting in on road and bridge to determine emergency access, then they're not going to have any choice liability-wise, but to make it expensive emergency access.
Yeah, I hate, I'd hate to confuse the messaging there. I agree.
Is there a different definition between a driveway and an egress in the statute?
I don't know.
No. I don't know about statute. I guess we'd have to check our, I think our own code only talks about our, we only have driveway standards.
I wonder if an egress is a way to kind of make it an emergency access point without having all the standards of the driveway. But I don't know enough, so I'm sorry if I interrupted.
No, no, I mean, I think that's a great point. The only thing is, is like Paul was saying, there's several of these properties that people can't drive to. They literally are hiking and biking and snowmobiling into. And I guess again, that's where we come back to, what are we going to require as the county? Are we going to require them to have legal access to their front door? And is that road access? Is that driveway access? Or are we okay with, you know, what does that look like? I understand that we have some liability as the county, making sure that we can inspect these structures and such. So obviously there's a lot of sense to that discussion.
I would have to talk with Mike over at County Road and Bridge. The driveway code is way outdated, you know? This is probably the time to update it because there's a huge discrepancy between what is a driveway and an access road and some emergency access. And that would probably be to be clear.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And this is administrative review? Like this wouldn't, these type of, okay.
Well, a little bit of a discussion on whether, and we're to be a little, we're not even anywhere near that, a discussion on making what we would think of as a standard, single-family detached, conditional or not. You know, so I don't want to go in that direction, but yet, because I think we're not even close to being ready for that, but maybe standard, single-family detached, potentially conditional use. But, but I think we're, we're still in access, so that might be me jumping way, way too far ahead.
I was just curious, like if, if it could be something that, you know, case by case as a, as a part of that administrative review process, because it does seem like it's kind of a and/or like some it, it, I think it's just hard to write this all in, in one document. And I think access is, yeah, just the tip of the iceberg potentially, but.
Yeah, and I do think that you know, if you want to contemplate a build, you, access is something that has to have some reasonable reliance to be able to even contemplate a build. So you know, there's, there's some ideas, like you said, if you take it on a case-by-case basis, through an administrative review, that some of those things will get fleshed out, so.
Hey, Anne, this is Kayla. I just kind of have a question related to the timeline on this. Is there the timeline that you have because there's a huge demand and a huge increase in questioning about these kinds of uses?
Sure. I, I think, I think twofold. I think that there's a desire because we've been working on this for such a long time. And this thought of, you know, desire to, to go ahead and get this code written and, and implemented and as well as the demand. So I think it's, I think it's twofold. I think it's the priority of, of the planning commission to bring this code amendment forward as well as the demand.
Yeah, I'll add to that a little bit. It's crazy what we see, you know, when we get any of these. I mean, as you can imagine, with the way that things have been going real estate-wise, like the second there's a mining claim listed and somebody sees six acres for thirty thousand dollars, they all freak out and they all get really excited and you get a gazillion phone calls every day because somebody wants to build on it. And right now, the way the code reads is they can use it the same way they can use any other property in town, but they can't get to it. And then they immediately start going into, oh, well, can't I just build up the road to it then? And then can't I do, you know? So to me, there's, there's a big need for it because there's half the people that do want this off-the-grid, cool rustic place and, and, and are willing to jump through their own hoops and deal with no insurance and, you know, deal with those kinds of things on their own. But then there's also my desire to protect those areas from overdevelopment, because I think that that's, you know, there's more and more money coming to town. And it's people with, people with big money that can make development on those hillsides happen a lot faster. So anyway, I, I think that the, the demand is there for sure to do both of the things.
May I answer Commissioner Bunch's question in the chat?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I don't even see the chat really pop up on my end.
Oh. Sarah just asked where in the, in the language does it state that, that there's more of an allowance within? State that, that there's more of an allowance within this zone district. And so what I think that it does is it, it makes it less regulatory. So instead of having a minimum square footage of 600 square feet for dwelling unit in this area, that's been removed to not have a minimum size. And as the code lies right now, you would have to meet all of the applicable building code. So you would have to have a well and you would have to have an OWTS. And those are things that we talk about the possibility of variances for limited occupancy as far as sanitation. And the possibility of, of cisterns for potable water and, and, you know, bringing in water. And so lesser, so right now in the backcountry to be able to utilize it for single family detached. And, and like Heather said, right now, I think we're seeing such an incredible demand on development that. I think that we will eventually will see a building permit come in where they will spend a million dollars to put in their dream cabin in the backcountry. And, you know, that will be not, you know, with enough money. I think that, that, you know, there will be a desire to. Develop the backcountry and to maybe something that doesn't promote the purpose and intent of, of the direction which. This code would drive things. So it's, it's reducing, it's not really adding, it's, it's reducing some of, of the regulation in the backcountry.
I think, I think some people have touched on it and I, and I, I do apologize for not quite being like clear on this topic. But I do think that it's. It kind of confuses me a little bit to. Say that we don't want people, you know, we want to, in a way, we're saying we don't want people to be able to put in septic systems and wastewater management. But then we're requiring them to meet certain. Regulations that would also require kind of a cascading effect of perhaps easements and roadways and maybe we're. Having the opposite effect as what we, we really intend in the language here. Is anybody else confused by that or help me?
You know, Sarah, um, one of the intents of this is to not create dwelling units in the backcountry. And right now dwelling units are allowed in the backcountry. And I think that Heather is actually looking at limiting the, the size of a dwelling unit. These are.
Year, year round dwelling units or any kind of dwelling unit, Paul, and can we?
Year round, year round dwelling unit. This is, this is not, the backcountry zone district is not intended to create those. If it's going to be a year round dwelling unit, it's going to have to have water and sewer.
Right.
And, and this one, these, these backcountry. Structures. May not actually be dwelling units and, and in fact, I think their intended use is. A, a maximum of 180 days a year, particularly if they. Get a variance to allow for a pit privy. And they haul in their own water.
Right.
We assumed they would be limited a lot by what they're allowed to do as far as sanitation requirements. With that idea.
But the requi. Oh, if you require them to establish a certain amount of sanitation, then you're kind of. Allowing for more. For folks with more resources to be able to. Actually build or. Develop any kind of structure.
Well, let's go backwards. I think what we are trying to say is that. If you're going to camp on it. Per what public health and I don't know the exact number of days it is, but I think per, per public health, you can camp on your land for so long without having any kind of onsite. You know, privy or, or pit or, or whatever, right? Then you're going to, then you're going to come to Lake County and you're going to say, okay, well, actually I don't want to just camp on it. Now I want to put a. Yurt or a small hunting cabin on it and I also am only going to use it 120 days a year and that still allows me to just continue using. The composting toilet or the pit or the privy or whatever. And you're like, okay, great. And then. They say, well, now I want to build a house that I'm going to live in six months out of the year. Well, public health is going to require them to have a septic system at that point. And so they can do that, but as long as they can figure out how to get a septic system installed up there. And as long as they still meet our other structure size requirements. In what we were trying to talk about as a talking point here is if you have a max square footage. Up here. Then you're still promoting it to be. More of a backcountry use. So if somebody wants to live in their little 700 square foot cabin year round. I don't know that we care about that versus them staying in their 120 days a year, but we figure. Their sanitation. The handling sanitation is going to all be dependent on what. Lake County Health Department says it can be.
Yeah, that's pretty well stated. I think that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish here.
So we're not talking, we're not telling them what they can do. We're just letting them know that Lake County Public Health. Has, you know, their alternative systems, but they have to be in compliance with them.
Well, and that's another thing that I think we need to address, environmental health also needs to address. With other challenges that have come up in the last month, I don't think that we have a gray water and good alternatives for folks. And so it's kind of. One extreme or the other, and maybe I misunderstanding and that is because of. Some commercial use involved in a particular. CUP that came up with questions to the board, but. I, I would encourage us to develop. More alternatives and regulations so that we had a larger menu to offer folks.
No, I think that'd be great. I mean, we've been, I think everybody would like to see public health do that, but that's out of our realm, planning and zoning, unfortunately. I think if public health could come up with alternative options that they're willing to allow for. That'd be awesome.
Yeah, this gray water, black water separation thing is something that public health is just not currently equipped. To be able to regulate. Same thing goes with cisterns. Public health, no, putting water in a cistern, standing water in a cistern is a terrific growth environment. So, uh, public health is not very enthusiastic about cisterns either. So. I think we're mostly talking about people that are willing to. Have a cabin in the woods that they go visit once a month for a, a weekend or an extended weekend and they. Haul in their water or they melt snow or, and they have a. Probably a pit privy in, because I, public health has permitted those in backcountry circumstances. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about, I think Heather, you mentioned it already, diving down the rabbit hole of. Getting stuck on. All of this. All the details. I mean, what I'd like to do is to continue on and, and look at the development standards that we've got, because I already see something that just isn't right. On the development standards. Like parcel shall meet the zoning standards of the underlying zone district. Well.
Right, right.
That was from when we thought of this, we don't relay.
Right, that, that's why I brought it up as a talking point is that, you know, we need to, to look at the density and dimensional standards. As a standalone district and not.
Typically, these parcels that we're talking about are backcountry mining claims. I think that that's for the most part, and I think the county and. Bryce, you may want to weigh in here, but I think there's about 600 of them, 600 backcountry. Mining claims that. The assessor has historically called a recreational mining claim. And when I first heard that, I thought, how can you be mining and recreating all in the same sentence? But nonetheless, the fact is, is that these mining claims are usually. Sort of matchsticked with other mining claims or standalone with public land surrounding it. So I, I think there are very few parcels out there that are not mining claims. That we're talking.
I agree. Well, and I don't think where we're talking about the zone district occurring is in the mining industrial area.
That's right, yeah.
No, right, no.
So here we are, up St. Kevins Gulch, I think, is one area where there, where we're looking at putting this. Backcountry zoning, but there has been a bunch of mining up there. And that's never been restricted by industrial mining and. Restricted by that. I don't know how you feel about that, but that's certainly open for. Mining as well as camping in backcountry. And we're getting a lot of people that are actually going up Gleason Gulch and St. Kevins. We have somebody in Indiana that's selling these things cheap and people buy them. And it turns out to be Lake County's version of swamp land in Florida. Because these people all of a sudden realize that, well, I, I can't get there year round. Oh, my word. I have to do what? A septic system and drill a well? Oh, I never thought about that. And. This is what we have to deal with here in, in the building and land use department. These are people that. Spent $10,000 on a mining claim and thought they got a great deal for six or 10 acres. And then suddenly realized that there's not much that they can do on it because they can't get in and out year round.
Is there anybody that understands how we can. Bridge that gap in any transfers of deed because. I've also just come to realize too that, you know, water rights on the abandonment list, that is a gap. That doesn't get transferred with, with land titles. And I, I just wonder if locally we can impose the. Sharing of more information when real property is transferred.
I mean, I've thought about that, but at the same time, it's like, there's only so much you can do by your due diligence, you know, if you're going to go buy. Seven acres for $6,000 in Colorado of all states in the mountains and think that you're like this one person that found this really great deal, then. I mean, there's just like only so much you can do about it. I think if they're, if they're utilizing the right people. In the informa, I think one key thing is making sure that, you know, any information that's new. That is being imposed is being shared. With the people who should know, such as all the real estate agents entitled, you know, anything that title companies need to be aware of, those kinds of things, but. Imposing any kind of regulations or anything like that additional, I just don't know that there's a way to, to capture all that. Like Paul said, most of the time. The people that are getting bamboozled into this. I love the Florida swamp land analogy are not going through Realtor and they are totally just buying it from some. Chormy guy on the internet and that's their, you know, there's only so much you can do about that.
We educate people constantly, you know. Claims coming up in the IM that people are selling that they tell them they can build on and. And this particular Realtor, I guess she has real estate license, she buys these and, but she doesn't even live in the state. So I'm not sure how she's licensed in Colorado, but anyway. You know, we, we, we educate a lot of folks that, that don't fall into those traps, but if they, you know, yeah, it does rely on. It does rely on. On the, on a buyer doing their due diligence, but yeah, I don't know how we can. Cure every situation where a seller's not being honest about their property.
We do encourage, Anne and I both strongly encourage, use a local real estate agent. Because they may use one that's not local and doesn't understand many of these nuances of buying a mining claim. And. They don't often get title work done because they're paying cash for it. They're, they're grandma's inheritance. They get $10,000. Oh, I'm going to go buy some land. And.
We usually scare them enough that they, they at least, they look a little deeper into the details, but yeah, I don't, I don't know how we protect every sale. Unfortunately.
Yeah, I, you know, it doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen. And it's, you know, I'd, I'd like to think that. We can do something like that, but I think it's also stepping into the realm of being the nanny state. And that's, we're getting into a realm of protecting people from themselves. And I, I think we could, that could be a slippery slope.
Let's get, yeah, let's get back on to this though for now.
What's the minimum lot size? What's the smallest mining claim, Heather?
She's, I don't know.
What about mimicking something like the recreational zone district, dimensional standards?
The what zone district?
The recreational. Minimum lot size of three acres. Like, you know, just to start with, with minimum lot size is three acres in the recreational. Add for, add forestry's five acres. Add residential's three.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and, and this would just be for creating new, right? Because we're all going to.
This would be our, we would, we would have to, to do dimensional standards for. Well, and largely in the areas, I guess we should think about this is a lot largely the areas that we have chosen for the overlay or either. Currently zoned recreational or ag forestry.
Yeah, a lot of it is zoned actually forest service with in, in holdings.
Right, so in, in the, in the thought of not creating any kind of, of taking. For existing, maybe keeping the same dimensional standards of the ag forestry, potentially that's the most generous. Size and, or, or, well, depending on which, which way you look at it, five acres being the minimum lot size in the ag forestry, but.
Well, I have a minimum. I mean, we're talking about parcels of land that predate subdivision regulations.
Or for minor subdivision.
I'm, I'm thinking also in terms of a minor subdivision is going to require that you have water.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking, when you're in a zone district that doesn't, is that, does that remain, does that remain applicable?
I think it does. I think that if we were to actually refer this to the division of water, a minor subdivision in the backcountry zone district. We were to refer this to the division of water resources, they would put the kibosh on it right away.
Well, they would just simply, they would not allow water, but I don't know if they would keep it from, because we have, we have created dry parcels in unique situations, so.
Yeah, in, in unique situations, but I think subdividing in the backcountry is kind of an anathema to what we're trying to do here. I don't think we want more parcels in the backcountry.
Can we just, yeah, I mean, is it something that you can say? You can't do a minor subdivision in the backcountry zone district? Or is there a reason we would want to do that? Want to allow it?
I think there's plenty of reason to not allow it.
Increases density. I think that's, I think that's the reason, but. But when you're, when we're contemplating parcels that aren't required to have water and sewer as far as well and septic, then I'm not sure that that's the reason. The rationale behind it, but, but density, I think, would be the rationale. And, and keeping an intent with the, with the intent of the zone district of it being a more low density.
Well, I, I tend, I, I wonder if, Heather, I ask again, do you, did you know what the smallest mining claim you've ever run across? Is?
No, I mean, I've seen obviously somewhere they've overlapped so much that like, I mean, you could have something as little as like a quarter of an acre is left over of this little thing. But not very often. I mean, most of the time they're at least a couple acres. But I guess I'm. But I guess I'm wondering if we're rezoning a whole area, then those existing under that three or five or whatever acreage we give are already gonna be zoned that. So this would only apply to new zones and/or minor subdivisions?
I think that's a good point.
So then it doesn't matter if we keep it three acres?
I think it does.
That's what Anne's saying, right?
I think it doesn't matter if we have a minimum lot parcel size.
Why wouldn't we? What, so you would suggest that there, you don't need dimensional standards?
Well, we don't need size, lot size standard. I think we probably want to have a setback in a building height. But I don't know that we don't want to have that much more. We're talking about already existing parcels of land.
But what if somebody comes and says, I wanna rezone my lot to backcountry?
And that happened to me today. And I finally got through to him after about 20 minutes that anything that we, if you wanted to rezone your four acre mining claim to backcountry, you're gonna have to do a fairly large number of claims that change because otherwise it'll simply be a spot zone. And a spot zone is not legal.
Right. So what's the minimum lot size then to rezone to backcountry?
Well, I think.
For a rezone, for rezone.
We are zoning. We already know what we want to zone, where our zone districts are, or where our backcountry zone districts are. And I think that already the, those zone districts exist in our minds at least. And the parcels already exist and there, I don't believe there are any subdivisions in those particular back, proposed backcountry zone districts. And I think that we don't want to entertain any subdivisions in those backcountry zone districts, whether they're minor or major. Do you?
I would agree, Paul, but I don't have a lot to back that opinion.
I mean, I, I, I can see it for, for keeping with the intent of, of the zone district that we don't want to encourage higher densities. But I do, yeah, I, I, it just seems like when we, we make blanket assumptions over things, then, then there's unintended consequences, so.
Well, the way I could see us needing a minimum lot size is if I have a piece of land that's close enough to the backcountry district that I want to rezone backcountry. And I would need to know what side, and I know that that's like very unlikely based on what we're swapping here. But just for, I guess my question is, does it hurt anything for that minimum parcel size to be three acres?
Probably not.
Because if, if we're gonna zone this like whole section, for instance, over by St. Kevens, and there are a couple that are under the three acres, it doesn't matter because we're gonna go and rezone them. We're not creating them as non-conforming uses, right? Or are we?
No, I don't, I don't think we are.
So the three acre minimum lot size just helps us back up not subdividing and it helps us in case somebody wants to rezone something backcountry at some point.
That's my thought process.
Yes, I can, I see your point.
And so if it's, as long as it won't hurt anything or cause any issues, having a minimum lot size of that, of like a three acres, then I think that makes sense to me. Because that sounds like that's what they are zoned right now anyway.
Well, a lot of them are, yeah. We, our, our zone district is largely AF and that we're looking to change from is AF and RC. Is that right, Anne? And the minimum lots, but we know we've got a lot of lots in the RC zone district that are not meeting the three acre minimum lot size. I, I, I would guess that there probably aren't any mining claims in the backcountry zone district that are less than three acres.
If there are, there aren't many.
If there are, there's probably very few. So what do we do with somebody that says, comes to us with their, their two and a half acre backcountry mining claim?
I guess that's what I was asking. Would they be considered non-conforming at that point? Does that mean, like, what happens to them right now? If they're in their zone district currently, but they don't have the minimum lots?
If they're a lea-, if they're a legal lot, they get to have what they want.
So would that still apply with rezone to backcountry?
Yes, because most of them are gonna predate, so they're gonna be.
Yeah, that's, that's the key though, that most of those lots predate subdivision regulations. Like.
The predate 1972.
Yes.
Yeah. Well.
So that's, that's why I go back to, do we even need a minimum parcel size?
But I guess that just makes me think that why not have a minimum parcel size?
Yeah, I don't have really a strong feeling or argument for and against it.
Um.
Because if there is a less than three acre parcel in the backcountry zone district, the ones we're entertaining, and it's a legal lot, I think that whatever the zoning is, it's still a legal lot. We can let them have what, what it is they want.
Yeah, that's my understanding also. Okay. Well, let's just move on with that three acre as an idea.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the code speaks to legal non-conforming and, and allows that, so.
The habitable structure section here. This is where we kind of got into that Lake County Environmental Health Department is going to determine your, you know, use of potable water indoors, septic system. And this is where we have a minimum square footage size and we want to talk about a maximum.
I think this 600 square feet is the proposed maximum. But that's for a backup structure. And this is also where we get into a little bit of difficulty because of this overlay. Essentially allowing for what's currently allowed right now, which is a micromanage, a micro mansion, a mini man- mansion and a backcountry cabin. So I think that a property owner kind of has a choice as to which way they want to go. But they, I think the intent is to not let them go both ways.
So I interpreted it too as like there can be almost two tiers.
Yeah.
You choose a full year-round dwelling, well, then you have a higher standard of access that you have to prove, you know.
And water and sewer requirements.
And maybe you make it so there's a 600 square foot maximum on a non-year-round structure. That's the limit. Doesn't have to uphold the building code because it's, you know, a seasonal structure. And then there's a second tier, second option you can do, where you can have the full ag forestry zone, right? Water, septic, everything like that, but you have to prove access. You have to prove all the things you would normally have to. And, but you have a maximum, a larger maximum, just I'll throw out the 2,000 square foot maximum if you try to choose to go down that path. You can't do either or. Or sorry, it's either or, you, you have to choose, this is going to be backcountry structure or full-time dwelling.
You don't get both.
But I would, I would just correct the statement that you don't have to abide by the building code because we're not, we're not relaxing. We're, we're still saying these structures are gonna be built to the, to the, to the building code.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something, Howard isn't here, but that's something he was pretty adamant about. Is that they have to comply with the building code. And we, we get more into that a little later on as to how.
I guess my question is, I, I like where that's going, Brights, because I think that that's probably what we want and maybe what was intended here. So I almost think that under development standards, we're gonna have, under habitable structures, you'll have, you know, option one is backcountry cabin or use. And then the other one is more of a primary use of, I don't know, we'll call it something more of a year-round type use. Or maybe it doesn't even have to be year-round, but it's a little bit more substantive of a use. And have different requirements for those. But I did think that we were hoping to go into on the backcountry version, that if they built a structure, it would meet code. But if they did, but that there would be the possibility of use of temporary structures. So like.
Tents and yurts and, and stuff like that?
Yep.
Okay.
I think that we're still gonna entertain things like snow load, wind speed. I mean, we're still gonna entertain things like that. Is that correct? I mean, we're still gonna be considering anchoring and snow loads and.
I think we, we, we have to. I mean, this is a, the building code is a public safety issue. And I don't think we can allow for structures to be built that are less than our standards. So I think that snow load and wind load are gonna be pretty important.
I wouldn't want that to prohibit, like yurts or those kinds of things, like Heather said, though.
Yeah, no, I mean.
If you're, if they're temporary structures, are they considered more, is it considered more of a quote-unquote camping scenario, right? If they want to put a yurt up and they're gonna stay there for two months out of the year and then they're gone, then it's, it's the same thing as them pulling their RV up and spending that amount of time there. Like, if they're gonna make their RV meet those codes, so I guess that's what, that's where I'm confused.
Well, I think it depends because like we have somebody putting in a yurt right now that has a building permit. And they're able to, it's habitable and, and so there's a standard that they have to meet, but it's not the same as, as a dwelling unit. And so if they're gonna take it in and then physically take it down and remove it at the end of every season, that's, that's different. So, but you know, you can buy them from the manufacturer that can be manufactured or, or built for snow loads and, and climate. Like the Montrose, your company, they have a package, high country package that meets snow load and, and energy code. And, and the anchoring or this wind load comes with anchoring. So if it's going to be literally, you know, a temporary structure that's gonna be removed, then, you know, that's a thought. But I would still think when it's in place, it should be properly anchored for wind speed, just for safety. But, but they can be, I don't think, I don't think that's completely discouraging, yurts. You know, we're doing one right now that's being used for yoga and accessory to their primary use. And, and it's being able to be permitted with building permit.
Building code defines temporary as being six months or less. So, and, and I don't think we do any permitting of such temporary structures. So a tent is not subject to a building permit.
Right. So if they're, if they're gonna, if they're gonna put it up and take it down every, every year, I guess that.
That's a slippery slope. I can see a lot of people putting it up and then saying they're gonna take it down and, oh.
And then.
You're not sure how you like police that really, but.
Yeah, you know, and that's one of the things that we often get hung up on is how do you police the code that we're writing? And, and I think it's okay to know that we're not gonna be able to police it. It's just going to be something that people are gonna be able to get away with because we're talking about the backcountry here. And how often do any of us get up into the backcountry? Particularly if you're looking to be a policeman. So I, I tend to think that, yeah, there's gonna be people that are gonna put up a tent and they're gonna leave it up there and they're actually gonna stay in it for six or eight months. And, you know, and, and the only way you hear about things like that is that somebody else tells us, tells us about it. You don't otherwise go looking for these things. So, yeah, there's going to probably be some degree of code violating that goes on. But you can't get it all. Or do we really need to try? We have a code. We know that some, in some cases it gets violated. And when we hear about it, we have to do something about it, but oftentimes we don't hear about it.
So are we looking to relax the building permit requirement?
No, I think we're not. I think we can't. If somebody wants to build a backcountry cabin of, say, less than 600 square feet, it still has to comply with the building code, which means that it, it, it can have some form of a, a wood foundation. It has to be able to meet the energy code, which is what, Anne? Did we? 68 degrees at four feet above the.
Four feet off the floor. Yeah, so, so you can do that with just like, you know, by pulling a mechanical prevent, putting in a wood stove. So during times of use.
Right, yeah. Wind load and snow load.
That's what we've seen modeled in other communities like Gunnison and other areas that have allowed yurts as habitable space and how they've been able to, you know, we spent a lot of time in developing this code by looking, modeling other communities and looking to Chaffee County, Ebel County, Summit County, and how they worked this type of, of use in their, into their development codes.
Yeah, we ripped from all of them, I think, some degree or another. So I'm, I'm liking this idea though of, of a two-tier system that you, if you're gonna keep it less than 600 feet, then, then you don't have to have a bathroom. You don't have to have a kitchen as such. But if you want to go above 600 feet, you have to comply with water sewer. And you can build a house. And I'm thinking, do we want to have a maximum on that size of the second tier?
I do, I, I do. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think absolutely.
Yeah, I do too. What, what do you think that, that maximum size ought to be?
My theory is to 1,800 to 2,000 square feet.
And mine was probably closer to 1,500, but, you know, somewhere in there, I think.
Now, that would have been closer to mine. It was closer to 1,500. In fact, I might have gone to 12.
Yeah, I, I think 12 would be, not, I mean, just given the, the things to overcome to, to even, you know, largely the things don't, aren't built in these areas because, because of the cost that it would take in order to develop them. And, and the typical person wanting to utilize it has more of the backcountry idea in mind. And so the cost becomes, what, what they're limited to be able to build is having to do with minimum single-family detached, just doesn't meet what, what they want to use the structure for, so.
Uh, this is Commissioner Glenn. Once again, I have to say that where is a government's position to tell a person how big a place they can build as long as they are within code? I just am having a hard time with this whole concept. Thank you.
Mark, we, we've been doing that for years, actually. We, we don't let people build a, a house that's less than 600 square feet. That's, that's a, something that our zoning code has had for 30 years, I think. So.
Yes.
We do that on the bottom end.
You did, you did, but what gives you the authority to do it on the upper end? If, if people have. Uh if if people have the means and can fall within uh the parameters of the code, then I I just have a problem with it. We should not be able to tell people how and where and what they can do with their property. Thank you.
I I I just um I guess just thinking of kind of the sensitivity of these areas, I think that's I think that's what's driving the idea of not having um or having a maximum allowable size, just because, you know, these are generally um adjacent to areas that either maybe there's hazards or there's areas that are sensitive to development. And um so I think that that's kind of driving that thought process. But I understand not wanting to limit a person's rights.
Well, that's what zoning does.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think I I can appreciate that standpoint for sure. There's trust me many times and even right now when we're dealing with multiple things that sometimes I think more regulation is causing us more problems than it's helping us. Um so I absolutely agree with that to an extent. I think that really, Mark, this is coming from a comp plan kind of perspective of, you know, I think that Lake County has the opportunity right now to not be a silver thorn where all of the mountainsides are covered with houses. Um and you know, and I think that there's a lot of regret there from from long term time customer uh, you know, homeowners and residents of those communities of where, you know, we wish we would have kept some of that, you know, view shed and and pristine, you know, community. The reason we live here, right? We're not living here to to look at high density areas. And so I think if we allow little McMansions to litter our mountainsides, I think that that would be regretful. Whereas I think that right now the people purchasing those lots are not looking to do that. The people who own those lots, for the most part, do want to have this more uh quiet, off the grid type of feel to where they're at. And that's why they've bought them off the grid and they're not buying them. You know, in Reba Ridge and Twin Lakes, um because they don't need to be around the the McMansions and the 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 overdevelopment of things. And so I think that in a lot of ways, we're helping protect that, you know, if it that's the area, there are certain areas that are meant for industrial use and there are certain areas meant for um, you know, that are perfectly feasible for this rustic off the grid type of dwelling unit. And then there are places where it's far more reasonable to see a 5000 square foot house, you know, with a fully paved driveway. Um and I just think that they don't all coexist well together and nor should they. And I think that that's what we're trying to do is develop this area as being one that you know, identified as this is an area where people have historically and currently are looking for use on more of a rustic setting. And to keep it that way, we need to have some sort of, you know, regulation in place.
Well said. So one of the things that I might see if there is should be more discussion about is this 600 square foot maximum for a back country cabin? Should it be a little bigger than that?
I guess it depends on if we're gonna do the two tiered section, you know, the two tiered idea. Um I don't know if it needs to be two tiered, actually, like the more we're talking. I don't know if it need, I don't know if we just want to be saying that there's a all maximum square footage and that you know, maybe up above, it's more of a depending on the use of the structure is going to depend on what they can do. And I don't even know if we wanna be quoting what environmental health is gonna require them to do based on how many days a year they utilize their place.
Well, um you know, if somebody could build a 1200 square foot or 1500 square foot back country cabin?
I do worry that that could um open the door for, you know, you you address commercial use below as as not being the intent. So I feel like 600 square feet does a pretty good job of discouraging commercial use.
Yeah, I'm I'm beginning to think that uh that this two tiered thing that we're talking about is if you have two maxims and perhaps no minimums. And uh what happens when environmental health allows for a something less than a septic system? They also will have a document that gets signed and recorded by the property owner that they will only occupy it uh up to 180 days, because otherwise they're overextending the ability for a septic system to be or for a privy or for a vault to be able to handle it. So if the property should ever sell, it wouldn't be able to be sold as a dwelling unit. Full time dwelling yet. So I think that environmental health does actually um and may have to actually crank into all of this, because I think that if you want, if if somebody in the back country zone district wants to do something less than a septic system, they're gonna have to go visit the Board of Health and explain to the Board of Health what they wanna do and why they wanna do it. And then the Board of Health would actually say.
Well, and I apologize. I didn't mean uh that we take them out completely. I more was saying that we may not wanna like quote what the requirements will be, because we don't know what they'll be and they could be ever changing. But I think.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely referencing that that's not in our realm, but that's going to be a huge factor in what their use is going to entail.
Yeah, I I would do it by by adding a definition of habitable structure, um back country build and defining it, but leave, you know, doing it, do it, just structuring it a little bit different. Um allowing for approval by public health for alternative waste and and trying to not be overly specific about it be because it may, you know, change in perpetuity, you know, it's like may not always be 100 days for temporary occupancy. And they may eventually be able to do gray water systems and, you know, so um I think that's a great point of of trying to not be overly specific in the code because it, you know, to try to um as thing allow for change in in different areas. There's also somewhere in here, a a oh, it's down here, a reference to Building Resolution 1712 or its successors. And I just would take avoid having those kind of mentions in here and in in the code. But allowing it to be a little more big and and allowing those to just point back to those regulations and.
I agree. I think that would make sense to me as well.
Are we still talking about a two tiered approach?
Well, I think I think when we say two tier, I think that's the way that we're 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 wrapping our heads around it. I'm not sure. It's a codified two tier. I think if you are using if you're going under the definition of habitable space back country build, then then this is how you're compliant. If you're going to go under single family detached, um here are, you know, here it it has the normal criteria. Um with maybe the caveat of of putting a max about allowable square footage in the back country zone district.
So so then if somebody wants to um live in it year round, they could do that if and live in a 500 square foot house year round. Um but it's not the size that dictates it. It's the use that dictated dictates.
Right, right. I would say it's the use that, you know, if you're using single family detached, then you follow single family detached. Already standing codified regulations. If you're gonna do habitable structure slash back country build, then then here's the parameters and and kind of get away from thinking of it as a two tier, thinking of it as you're you know, dependent on the use. Yeah.
Yep, I agree. Well, and I and then with the single family detached, that's where the square footage uh max would be the 1500.
Okay, so should we choose?
Or whatever. Sorry, I just pulled that number out. I we I don't think everybody agreed on what number that should look like.
Well, I don't know that we'll all.
Well, let's start with the habitable structure slash back country dwelling unit. Looks like that one is a max of 600. How do we all feel? How does everybody on the planning commission feel about that?
In favor.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
And then how about for the dwelling unit?
I mean, I think 1500 is reasonable. I was going a little higher just because I figured there'd be more support for that, but I think if you wanna reduce, you know, use or even reduce people coming to look for it, then make it smaller.
Uh I.
Yeah, 1500 seems big to me. Um.
Me too.
So it's I'm a I'm open for discussion on that for sure.
I'd like to suggest 1200, double the 600.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I agree with Paul. If you double that 1200, that's a feasible number, but that kind of makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1200.
You could 600 up and 600 down or 1200. Yeah, so.
The doing this would not preclude somebody building a 500 square foot full time residence, right?
Right.
Well, well, I guess I I question that. Um you mean a 500 square foot full time residence under a habitable space back country build or under a single family detached?
Single family detached.
So we're gonna drop the minimum square footage for a single family detached, because that would be yet a different variance or a variation to the use for single family detached. So there is no minimum for single family detached. But there is a maximum for single family detached.
Nor would there actually be a minimum for a back country.
That's that's fine. It's just that the the standing current use in the zone district is single family detached. So that's why I was just wondering about that one.
Yeah. You know, and right now you could build a 500 square foot. Well, no, you can't. Right now, the zone, the the minimum size is 600 feet.
Yeah, that's why.
Why don't you just opt into those regulations where that 600 square foot minimum applies if you're going with the?
So I just thought, why not keep it consistent with what it current with the current use is unless you wanna modify it to that zone district?
So the single family detached would be between 600 and 1200. And the habitable structure slash back tree unit would be up to 600 square feet. That actually makes sense to me because you're building uh lesser regulation up to 600 and then from 600 up, you gotta you gotta build to normal.
It it just wouldn't seem terribly practical to to build a 400 square foot and then having to put all those systems into.
No, I agree. Yeah.
Yeah, I think I think 600 feet minimum supports all everything that's critical to a dwelling unit.
I was only thinking in terms of, I know of a couple of houses right here in the city of Leadville that are under 600 square feet.
Yeah, they don't have the their their minimum is different.
I know. I know. I'm just thinking in terms of the fact that a a house under 600 square feet is entirely possible.
Right. But I think to Abby's point, like installing a septic system in a well or whatever for for 400 or 500 square foot doesn't isn't likely.
Yeah, I I go along with that.
Um, all right. Well, we did. We did a really good job getting through F, maybe. Um we're nearing 6 o'clock. What do we? What do we wanna do? What is what are people's feelings right now?
Well, Anne and I probably could take what we've already come up with and see if we can massage that. Uh and then get back together again to go from item number six, camping and review agencies and utilities and site disturbance and design standards and renewable energy systems.
Yeah, I think a lot of the rest of it actually won't be as.
Tedious.
Yeah, um so I guess I would ask that if there were things up in here that um the items that we felt like we needed to talk to Erin about. If we could, and I'm happy to help with this, uh narrow down exactly what those few questions may be and maybe decide if it entails Erin chiming into one of our meetings for discussion, or if they're just questions that we could send to her and get answers. We can just, I guess, talk about them and see what those questions actually look like as to whether or not we need her to come to a meeting or not. And then I guess I would ask planning commission and other commissioner members to email um Anne and Paul if there are additional questions that we think would be beneficial for Erin when looking at this whole document. Um Erin being our uh attorney.
We call her Land Use Council.
Land Use Council.
Yeah.
Can I just touch on one more thing in number five before we go? It's gonna be really quick. Sorry to keep you.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Just number five, point C, there should be no commu- commercial use of the property, including when not limited to short term rental. I think it's we need to address the growing popularity of vacant land rentals. There's entire websites that are just essentially counterpart to Airbnb. Instead of renting out your house, you rent out your vacant land. And so if we're gonna be in short term rentals, I just feel like this is a loophole that's already being exploited by a lot of people. And it's a growing thing. And so maybe we have the potential to set an example for other counties, just like we borrowed from them. We can maybe make a regulations for them to borrow from us. But um just I would like something more clear about vacant land rental going in there, or else it's gonna quickly become well, great, now I can rent it out, put a temporary structure and RV on there. Still apply to my camping regulations of late using it less than 100 days annually and rent it out and make money.
Right. No, I I um I'm so glad you actually brought that up, uh cuz I we have seen that recently even with people who own lots just in subdivisions in town. It's really interesting. We're finding them advertised online to camp on um for a fee. So um I almost think uh that we need to add that to our current short term rental language um that yeah, either it's not allowed or I don't know, we're gonna have to decide how that looks. I think the other piece to this conversation for this back country zone that is important to remember is that we have properties such as the Weston Pass Huts and some of those others that legitimately run something. And they're doing it legitimately. They're doing it safely. They're doing it the right way. And I don't want to be creating nonconforming use for something like that um and or ignoring the fact that every once in a while there's somebody who has a legitimate business that works in that area and they have the ability to make it work. Um so there's a part of me that thinks maybe we need to look at that sentence a little bit and talk about that. Overall, we don't want people just renting out these little cabins up there that have no access and no emergency access and, you know, all of this stuff. But if somebody like Weston Pass Huts or somebody like that came in, I guess, what is their avenue to be able to get a variance from that? Is that a conditional use permit? Is that a zone change? Is that like?
Yes, it is a it is a. It is a conditional use permit, and many of our back country huts all have conditional use permits.
Right. And I guess I'm just wondering if us stating here, there will be no commercial use. Does that still allow them to do, you know what I mean? Like, are we contradicting ourselves? Are we making a contradiction in the code by putting under back country zoning district, there are no is no commercial use including and not limited to short term rentals, but then we allow it as a conditional use on the other end? Is that, and I don't know. That's me asking.
Well, and you mean like putting something in there that says unless you get a conditional use permit for a back country hut?
Unless conditionally allowed or.
Yeah, something to that. So anyway, I just, I wanted to point that out and I agree um with Bryce that people are renting out land. And it's not just gonna be the back country districts. They're gonna be doing it all over and we've gotta figure out how to make a stance on that. And it's not just going to be the backcountry districts, they're going to be doing it all over. And we've got to figure out how to make a stance on that.
Picking you back off of this real quick and B, adding and guests at the end. I've seen that term guests become an issue. Who is to say my guest can't pay me for food? Who is to say my guest can't pay me for using the space? So I just don't know if that's defined elsewhere in a code I haven't read or if that should be more specific if we don't want to encourage short-term rentals.
That's a really good point. And I've had that thought about that earlier today, and guests.
It's super small, I know, but I, that was my first, like.
No, and that's become an issue all across the short-term rental.
Yeah.
You know, discussion has been, well, it's my friends and just because they're paying me on the side doesn't count. I'm not actually like renting it on Airbnb, so it doesn't count, you know?
Well, and how well do you have to know your guests? They're still your guests if they're.
Yeah.
So.
No, exactly. And it's just gotten to be a crazy argument. And it's something I think we're going to have to deal with on the short-term rental licensing side that the county is dealing with. Although I will say that I think for the most part, the county hasn't had a whole lot of craziness up until this land rental shenanigans that have happened this year, but.
Yeah, we've been getting some RV rental things where a, an RV owner will put their RV on a website and set it up at anybody, at wherever their choice is, wherever the renter's choice might be.
Right, right.
But that's a short-term rental.
Well, not by code it's not, but anyway, I don't want to dive into, I don't think that's a short-term rental defined as by code, but.
Yeah, the code specifically mentions that it's a structure, short-term rental. Neither regulations do with it. So that's why this came up is like, it's a gray area that's not addressed anywhere.
Yeah, the land thing is new, but yeah, I've known about the RV thing, but, but I actually had somebody call and ask, and by code it doesn't, in my interpretation, it didn't, it didn't fit within the need for a short-term rental license.
Well, and it's possible that we're going to have to acknowledge the land thing under, instead of under short-term rentals, maybe that's going to be something that we put under the camping regulation. Right? Because I mean, I think at the end of the day, it's all about the use that we're regulating. And so if we're saying you're not supposed to be camping on this lot for more than X number of days, but we also have in the camping regulation that only the property owner can be camping on the land. Then it's, then that's solving that maybe? I don't know.
Well, the camping and accessory camping use in the definitions call them out as non-commercial. So as an allowable use camping, when you have five acres or greater, or accessory use camping, in the definition of it, it specifies that it's non-commercial camping that's allowed. So anytime there's money traded or then it would be considered commercial. And I, so just a thought that we were pretty good about when we put that in, thinking about, ahead about whether or not people would try to to use it as a commercial opportunity. So it is defined by code as non-commercial specifically.
Yeah, that's a case of where we got it right, huh? Accidentally got it right.
We purposely got it right, Paul.
Yeah.
That's right. Hey, I wrote that one. It was purposely.
Well, what do you think? Are we done for the day and then just reconvene in a couple of weeks?
Oh, yes. I wanted to just make sure our next regular meeting is, would be October 12th. Should we continue our discussion at that time on these outstanding items? And obviously, the timeframe was wildly ambitious, but it at least gives everybody an idea of the flow once we can take in the amendment as complete and start processing it. So at least it gives an idea of the outline of the process. But crazy ambitious timeline.
You all get Columbus Day off.
Is that? Is that the October 12th?
I can attend. I was just curious if you're.
We, we do occasionally meet on holidays because not everybody is county employees, but it's up to, it's just up to what everybody wants. If October 12th is good, that's our next regular meeting.
I am out of town on the 12th. So I can, I can make that work still, I think. Because I'm just at a conference, so I think I can make it work that evening, but also open to, because I know sometimes when it's a holiday, if you guys aren't working, we just move it to like the Monday before or?
Yeah. So we could, we could either do next Monday, October 5th, or we could do like the 13th on a Tuesday instead of a Monday. And I can send this out in an email too, if everybody'd like to have a little time to check schedules and see if we could have three different options and just see when we have the best attendance. I could send out like October 5th, the 12th and the 13th and see what works best for the majority. Does that sound like a good idea?
Well, I think the, the 5th is probably too soon because you and I aren't going to have time to do some tweaking on this and get it to the Planning Commission and the Board in a timely manner.
That's, that's a really good point, Paul.
That's next week.
Yeah.
Maybe the 19th?
Yeah, what about?
October 19th?
No, now that we're, we're zooming these weeks, pretty much do it whenever we want.
Yep.
19th works for me.
Okay. Do you want to call for maybe a roll call on the 19th?
19th works for Heather.
Okay. Steve?
19th works for me, absolutely.
Bryce, 19th. Abby, is that good?
Yep, 19th works.
Erin?
19th works.
Great. And did I hear an okay from Abby?
Yes.
Commissioners, is that a good day for you guys? Sarah and Kayla, are you still with us?
Mark, are you still there?
I think that should work for me.
Fine with me.
All right, 19th it is.
Okay.
Well, thank you, guys. I know it doesn't necessarily feel like we got very far, but I think we got far.
I do, I think we got pretty far.
Oh, yeah. This is great. It's just nice to be able to actually be working from a solid document and, or from a good draft and, and be moving forward. This is great.
Anybody have any questions or anything before we shut it down?
No, no, thank you.
Awesome. Well, happy Monday, everybody. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Or we can hang out and talk and.
Yeah.
I'll just say second, second to the motion.
Well, who moved and who seconded?
Boyle, motion to adjourn.
All right. And, and Bryce?
Seconded.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Hi.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
You too.
Night, everyone.